Good evening. I invite all members of the board and administration community to stand attention, face the flag, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. I am a nation under God, free of their laws.
All right. Thank you very much. In lieu of me running long in our workshop, I'm going to pass my lovely president's report to Dr. Montgomery. But no, he's saying something else. So. Want me to riff? I can riff. So I will pass to Dr. Montgomery for his superintendent's report.
I'll start as that's coming up. So we changed the presentation format. Renee and I will be kind of sharing this portion of the report. The topics that I'm going to cover, or the three of us are going to cover, are as follows, and there's quite a few, but we're going to move as fast as possible. We're talking about ACT, Mandarin, Phase One Construction, APT tech update, Foundation Grant Day, here's the list, Wall of Fame, See It To Be It, TEDx, Principal Advisory, and coming up. Remember that we are doing this with all three of us, so Aaron's not doing a separate report. Who's next? Aaron?
I think I'm first with ACT. As everyone knows, and we sent communications out about it, we had a little bit of a hiccup, big hiccup, on our first ACT date, but we just had a mostly successful administration yesterday, still some hiccups, and it was interesting seeing the communication going back and forth among schools today even, who were experiencing a lot of the same server errors that we were experiencing. But we're happy that we got through it. We do know that some of our students did not have as ideal of a testing opportunity as we would have hoped because of the server challenges that we had. But what I was really proud of was just the resilience the students were showing yesterday, the positivity even as they were waiting 30 and 40 minutes to begin a test, as we were trying to get new rooms set up. And we know, and we're really proud of our students, we know that they did the best that they could. And we will definitely use that data to inform our work moving forward. So yesterday, and then today, we had a few students finishing up, but yesterday we were able to finally administer the ACT, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with the ACT Corporation and work with ISPE to make that as ideal and optimal of a testing situation for our students as possible. So, just a little bit of an update for Mandarin, about Mandarin or Mandarin program. There really isn't anything for the District 115 Board tonight. What we have been doing, as we've been going through staffing, is noticing trends and trends in enrollment. And anytime I look at something like a world language program, I'm going to look at what our feeder schools are generating, as I think about how I continue that program over the years, what the languages will look like that we're going to continue to offer. Mandarin is a program that has struggled in enrollment since I've been at Lake Forest High School. This is my fourth year. And as we look at the projection from Deerpath Middle School, we see even smaller cohorts in 7th grade rising to 8th, and 6th grade rising to 7th. So with that, we did have a resignation of our longstanding Mandarin teacher a couple months ago. We have hired a new Mandarin teacher, but this is an opportunity for us to look at in declining enrollment actually sunsetting the Mandarin program. And we did this with German several years ago. It predates me, it predates Dr. Montgomery. What that would look like is our rising 9th grade students, we will offer Mandarin 2 to them, and we will see them through the opportunity of AP Chinese by their senior year. So that is our intent, to make sure that those students can continue to have an AP experience in a world language, if that's something that interests them. However, next year, we will not offer Mandarin 2, and the next year, we would not offer Mandarin 3. So you would see the progression of the sunsetting of that program. And again, we just have not had the enrollment that supports maintaining the Mandarin program, and we also see declining enrollment in general at Lake Forest High School over the coming years. I think that Dr. Fitzsimmons is also going to talk about some of the implications for District's, potential implications for District 67.
And we have been working very closely and collaboratively together on this. We know that our District 67 Mandarin families, who are so passionate about this, the language, the culture, they will be the most impacted. And we know that while District 67 is continuing its Mandarin program, we know there will be trickle-down effects, and as this program at the high school is winding down, we know that there is going to be disappointment, for sure. One of the things that we can say, that this is the time that our incoming 5th graders are selecting their languages. At this time, we anticipate there will be some that will want to switch their languages, all students above 5th grade. We are going to be working very closely with those families, and tomorrow, the DPM admin will be reaching out individually to all the families that are currently enrolled in Mandarin in 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. I will also be sharing a message with all of our District 67 families, because this will be infecting current 1st graders. Next year, they'll be rising 2nd, 3rd, and 4th graders at Cherokee.
Thank you very much. In the workshop, we talked a little bit about Construction 1, or Construction Phase 1 that has begun. It started right at the start of spring break. So while many of us were out and about across the country and the world, we had a facilities team in-house doing a great deal of demo to make sure that we were on our way when the students and faculty returned. So HVAC, mechanical, plumbing, electrical are all underway, and the metal stud interior wall construction has begun. So it has been a six-to-seven-year journey to get to this point, to see the work actually happening in the building certainly is something to be proud of. The next thing I will talk quickly about is that Jordan and the ed techs have been on a little bit of a roadshow with both the 67 APT, as well as the high school APT. Last week, they met with the high school APT and provided updates around technology, from topics as the transition from Chromebooks to MacBooks, to talking about how the ed techs are supporting learning, and then finishing with really where AI is going from their vantage point. I think it's going to be a regular annual update from Jordan, and it's wonderful to have him immersed with the parents asking real-time questions around technology. I'll move into Foundation Grant Day. The foundation, you know, is a tremendous source of support for the district. This year, they awarded $118,000 towards educational excellence, and many different beneficiaries had things to celebrate this year, from the Wellness Department, to the ed tech, to Student Support Services. And then don't forget that, on an annual basis, the Business Department is awarded a grant for the incubator program, and without their support, that program would not flourish in the way it has done.
So I actually had the privilege of emceeing our Wall of Fame ceremony, and this is something that, it's been five years in the making. I think during COVID is whenever we had to cancel this group of alumni who were actually set to receive their Wall of Fame award. So it was a lot of fun to welcome Clark Summers, who was the class of 1995. He is a Grammy-winning bassist, composer, and educator, and he's toured globally with all these jazz greats like Kurt Elling, Cedar Walton, and Brian Blade. He performed for the students as well, and mostly, he was just a really cool dude. So it was fun just to be kind of in his presence, and the presence of such a creative as well. And I'm the class of 95, and so it was just, it was cool to see how far he's come. Margaret McMullin, who's the class of 1978, she's written nine, nine award-winning books. She really spoke a lot about how she started thinking about writing when she was in high school, and how it began with ideas, and particularly, like she talked about a beehive outside her window, and how that sparked her mind as far as her own journey in high school, and, you know, getting stung, and she actually wrote for the Spastic Awards and won, and that's what really sparked her motivation to become an author. So she's written books like My Mother's House, Sources of Light, and Where the Angels Lived. And then we had Carla Nuschel Wykoff, who is the class of 1966, former American Medical Association exec, she was on the Hill, Lake County prosecutor and county clerk. She was also, and this was fascinating, since they didn't have women's sports, whenever she was at Lake Forest High School, she was a water ballerina. So she did synchronized swimming. So she talked about that, and our students were fascinated to learn about being a water ballerina and how that worked as well. But just what an accomplished individual, and especially just as an accomplished female from the 1960s, for them to see that example, that was a point of pride, too. After the ceremony, they got to tour the school. It has changed a lot, and they all acknowledged that. And then they got to speak to our law students, our music classes, and our English classes. So it definitely got to inspire some of our scouts to maybe be on the Wall of Fame someday. So it was a lot of fun to see them. Special thanks to Leslie Fisher, who is our alumni coordinator, our Wall of Fame Chair, Jennifer McGregor, and the Alumni Wall of Fame Committee members. It was quite the event. Another quite the event. So we have our See It To Be It series, and this is really the opportunity to bring people, professionals from the public, people from all different industries and walks of life, in to speak to our students so that they can see what opportunities are out there. On April 2nd, we had our first See It To Be It Civic Engagement Professional Panel, and this aligns with our World History and Geography curriculum. So all of our students, it was recorded, actually got to see and hear from these different elected professionals. So it was cool. It was cool for them to be able to ask questions. Steve Dunn moderated it. But what was, to the students, when you asked them what really resonated with them, what resonated with them the most was how interested these elected officials were in their opinions, even though they weren't old enough to vote. So they loved seeing how interested the adults are in just understanding what the student experience is. So hopefully, we created some future, you know, public officials among our students, because they just see the dedication that that involves. And then we see Simon up here. Simon is usually sitting next to Kat, as one of our student representatives, but we had our annual TEDx on March 19th. This was a lot of fun. We also see Kelly McBlain, who is one of our teachers, who spoke about her battle with cancer. And then Mike Mizwicki, he spoke about juggling and what juggling teaches you. And then we had Simon, who spoke about languages and languages that are dying throughout the world, and how we are losing some of our access to other cultures through these languages that are going away. So he did a beautiful job, and it's just interesting to hear these brave students and what they're interested in as they get up and they speak, and what really sparks their interest at Lake Forest and their peers, to see their peers so engaged as well. So TED Talks, it's the real deal, and it's a lot of fun to see. All right. And in just a few moments, Kat is going to be speaking about the Principal's Advisory Council. Last month, I talked about the Student Board Mixer, and I gave a brief highlight of some of those key themes. Kat has actually met, as one of the senior leaders on the Principal Advisory Council, she's met with the group a couple times now, to really synthesize that into their recommendations for the board to consider when it comes to the transition to Lake Forest High School, as well as the student experience at Lake Forest High School. So Kat will be talking about that in just a minute. I thought that maybe I would present on it, but I thought nobody better than the students who were leading that work.
Hopefully, in your mailbox, you received a postcard reminding you of tomorrow's Board President Coffee with myself, Mark, and John. And this is our continued attempt to provide outreach and access to our board leaders and members of the administration. This month, it will be in Lake Bluff at the Public Safety Building. We are also making a concerted effort to be present in all of our communities that we are proud to represent. In a, I think, two weeks, we have the Spring Musical, it's April 24th through the 26th, and it is Cinderella, and we are excited to see our students perform this wonderful musical. A shout out that there's a special meet and greet for our youngest theater fans on Saturday, featuring Cinderella, Prince Charming, and the fairy godmother after the 3 o'clock matinee on April 26th. Thank you to pals for sharing these behind-the-scenes photos as they build the sets in the RMA. We have an increased focus on communication around school finance and resources, two things to bring to the community's attention. We will be releasing the first episode of our Beyond the Budget video series, which is an overview of school finances and our annual budget cycle. And additionally, early next month, we will be sending out a community publication called The Bottom Line, which will serve to educate our community around our finances, and it will be replacing the Spring Insight. And we're excited to have this additional focus and transparency to the community around financial conservatism. A shout out to, this is a senior right now playing baseball for us. We are springtime season. This is Charlie Graham. And then in the topics of the evening, there was a picture of Jasmine Scott, who was competing in the spring track and field event. So when I say "spring" is in the air, I will leave you with the superintendent's report with a poem that I stumbled across today. Dr. Hermes is very excited when I read poems to her. Actually, the whole team is excited when I read poetry, because they know that I apparently have too much free time. But here's the poem that resonated with me today about appreciating the springtime season. "Loveliest of trees, the cherry now, Is hung with bloom along the bough, And it stands about the woodland ride, Wearing white for Easter tide. Now of my threescore years and ten, twenty will not come again, And take from seventy springs a score, It leaves me only fifty more. And since to look at things in bloom, Fifty springs are little room; About the woodlands I will go, To see the cherry hung with snow." I hope you all enjoy your springtime season and celebrate this time.
Thank you, Dr. Montgomery. Yes, three snaps up. You didn't do it as Jennifer Coolidge.
I'm not.
You should have. So that would have been very funny. Ms. Kate, I'll turn, Kat, sorry. I'll turn it over to you, or? Presentation. Lake Forest High School updates.
Yeah, okay, there it goes. Yeah, so as Dr. Lenard kind of touched on a bit, for the Principal's Advisory Council Student Board Mixer, I wasn't personally able to, my flight was delayed, so I personally wasn't able to be there, but I think a majority of you, all of you, got a letter from us, just kind of doing what students, kind of from our takeaways were, and like what we really thought from, like, all the student perspective. I know you had your own takeaways, but we did as well. So we included in that letter that students feel largely uninvolved in the referendum process. Scout Seminar has been highly successful. Teachers are incredible, but often teach similar courses differently, which kind of comes in conflict at different times. Students want to join more extracurriculars, but struggle with conflicting schedules. Students report exhaustion with intensive college competitive culture, and the mental health resources are very strong, but students don't know where to find them or how to use them. So we kind of go more into detail within the letter itself, so, but just from, I guess, the get-go, that these were our takeaways. I know Dr. Lenard also touched on TED Talk, but Simon wrote me up some bullet points, because he was very passionate about talking about it. But from coming from, again, from the student's perspective, he said it was a super cool event. There were lots of musicians, especially playing the guitar and piano. The speeches were great, and there were a really broad variety of topics, like anyone can learn to juggle, the history of salt, why to be a TA, and then Simon's was the importance of endangered languages. And then I know Dr. Montgomery touched on this as well, but Cinderella will be showcased April 24th, 25th, and 26th inside the LFHS RMA. And then it's starring two LF seniors, Declan Boyle as Prince Charming, and Nora Sharman as Cinderella, so you can just see them up there. And then finally, you may see some familiar faces, but seniors continue to announce their college decisions and heading throughout all the country next year. And several students are taking other routes, such as military, workforce, gap year, et cetera, and the high school's doing a great job accompanying whether, no matter your route next year, just everything, all in general.
Kat, thanks for the report out. I do have one question on the student takeaways. I was there during that night, and I thought it was really interesting and very informative to get feedback from the students. And I had also heard some of the same comments about students feel largely uninvolved in the referendum process. And then on top of that, I also had heard, just, they just didn't really know what was going on. It was kind of a combination of not involved nor communicated with. So, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but maybe you've thought about this, or, you know, talked with some of your colleagues about it, but from a student perspective, how do you think we can do a better job of either involving you in the process, which may be a hard thing to answer, because you may not even know what the process is, but how to involve you in that, and how to communicate with the student body so they have a better understanding of what is going on? So what works for students? We feel like we, you know, do a good job with communicating with our community, with parents and stuff, but how, what works for students?
I know that personally, there had been lots of surveys that, especially for like the frontature, that originally wanted to be filled out, just like through a QR code and stuff like that. And Dr. Fitzsimmons and I worked closely together for a couple weeks, really trying to plan out a focus group, which, that was a small group of students, but I think really just face-to-face is what students really, I guess, work best with, I guess, in that essence, just because everyone's really busy on their own, and no one's going to, just from my perspective, just going to scan a QR code on your way out of class. Students are ready to book it out of there when, like, the bell rings. But I think maybe just face-to-face, or if a teacher, if you talk to the teachers about it, and it's something where they mention in class, or if it's a video sent out in a newsletter, or, I don't know, something where it's built into the schedule so students really know how to just work with it within the day.
Great, great feedback, and I think this could be a good agenda item as also part of your Principal's Advisory Council, where you guys can talk through this and see what can work with scheduling. It could be focus groups, it could be big, you know, I don't say meetings, but presentations or collaborations in a, in one of the, you know, larger rooms where you can get a lot of people. But anyway, you guys can talk through that. Come up with it. I mean, you guys are super creative and solution-oriented, so I hope you guys can figure that out, because we really want to support whatever we need to do to keep you guys involved and up to speed with what we're doing.
And Kat, I love doing that with you. So if you want to invite me back for anything, I'm your girl with that. We did have about 15 people, I think, and we had a nice afternoon. So anything that would help facilitate that, I'm with you.
Awesome, thank you. I'm sure we'll be reaching on the future.
And Kat, I wanted to say just how much I enjoyed the Principal's Advisory Council event. It's kind of funny that you can sit on the school board and not interact with students all that often, but it is kind of the reality of this position sometimes. And so to have the opportunity to sit down with students and really hear their feedback was eye-opening for me. And one thing I want to say is, I just want to commit personally as a board member to taking these student takeaways very seriously. And I think we should be adding to our agendas and thinking about how we can build into our agendas being responsive to this, because, you know, obviously, people took the time to come and talk to us and share with us, and there was a lot of consensus around these issues. And so we should be responsive to them.
Thank you, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Great report, and again, I will echo the same thoughts in terms of the committee and the meeting getting the input, so it's great. So we'll make sure we keep those on and drive them over to Erin, and make sure she implements them. Okay, all right, thanks. Public participation. So if we have any folks that would like to address the board, I would, all right, so there is not. So we are going to move on to our first report, which is the Extracurricular Activities and Athletics Report with Ashley and Tim. So floor is yours. Thank you for sharing it ahead of time, which I've reviewed, so I've, spoilers, I've read, so it's good, and love to hear your take on anything you want to share in addition. So, thanks.
Thank you so much for your time. Obviously, we share a similar photo. We also thought it was very cool, and it's a very cool kid. So, nice choice, Dr. Montgomery. We first wanted to go through and do introductions.
Thanks for having us here tonight. Tim Burkhalter, Athletic Director. This is my 20th year in this role, and I've been at Lake Forest High School since 1999, where I started as a math teacher and coach. So just love this opportunity to come and speak to you all. Craig Shaiman's our new Assistant Athletic Director. Most of you know Mike Mizwicki, who has been our Wellness Instructional Director. He's also serving in a much larger role this year with, as an Assistant AD, particularly on the facility side, coordinating things that he does in wellness with what we do in athletics. So that's really been a great asset of marrying his work with the Wellness Department and our department. So we're really excited about that. Jean Lachazie, who is our Department Assistant, she's with us for the balance of the year, and she's got, she's retiring in September, so we will be posting her position and looking for her replacement. And then Rihanna, we were fortunate to get back into our office this year. She had been with us, then she moved over to Special Ed. She had been with us, then she moved over to Special Ed. Now she's back down with us, so it's great to have that team together. As you can see in the picture, we also have our Athletic Trainers, Equipment Manager, our Pool Personnel. So we're just really excited about the opportunity to talk a little bit about our programming. I'm going to turn it over to Ashley, talk about her department.
So my time at Lake Forest High School, I've been here for seven years. This is my 17th year in education, come by way of an English teacher. But, so I love the presentations and the opportunity to be able to talk about what we do in our offices. My office, it's myself and it's Tatiana Saban, who we've been together now almost two years. And we're always running around. So this is a picture just from prom last year, and we will work on one better for next year. It was this or eating cheeseburgers at the Wellness Walk. So I went this route. But she is, I affectionately term, magic. Everything that shows up and works itself out. So she's been a huge help to all Tim and I's work throughout the year.
I can attest to that, as we put this presentation together between Ashley and... Tatiana, sorry. They work magic with camera, and it's way out of my league. So this is all their handiwork. Want to talk a little bit about the celebrations we've had this year. On the activity side, we have these clapouts. If you haven't been to a clapout, I'm going to invite you next week. We have clapouts for the Science Olympiad Math Team, FBLA, and that's on Thursday, I think.
All three are going to state next week.
All three are going to state. It's a real quick event. It's during the passing period on a block day. We strike up the band, literally. We march them through the hallways. The kids stand on the rails around the hallways and clap their classmates out when they go to a state tournament. So we had those for Band Choir and Orchestra earlier this year. We've had a number of them on the athletic side. I've listed a lot of our accolades here. I'm going to go through them. But I really want to draw your attention to a really cool video that our new media team put together. And as that plays, I'm just going to kind of, we've got sound in the background. You can see our students here celebrating. We've got our Mural of Excellence. There's our state championship lacrosse team from last spring. Here we have our regional championship boys' basketball team. The best part is some of the backgrounds of this, where you can see the students celebrating their classmates. So here's the football team. I will say we beat Libertyville for the first time ever, twice in a year. That's a big deal. There's our gymnastics team, which was conference champs, indoor champs. There's our regional champion soccer team from last spring. There's the student body celebrating. Football team over at Libertyville. Here's the lacrosse team at the state finals last spring. Soccer team, which won the conference championship this past year. There's our dance team, which won the conference championship state qualifiers and national second-place finish. Volleyball team getting ready to take the floor in practice. Again, for kids with, they like that football stuff. Golf, we finished, advanced to the state finals. There's field hockey, which we proudly hosted the state finals. This year, our own field and finished second. Wrestling under the spotlight. A reemerging softball program that I'm really proud to back on solid ground. Lacrosse, which was a final four team. Here's our girls' basketball team celebrating a pick-out event. Again, just a great opportunity for our kids to come and celebrate with their class. So just, there's our night run, which we bring a bunch of teams from across country over to the field and finish there. So just wanted to share a couple key additions this year. With, we were able to add some athletes participating in golf this past fall. We were able to officially recognize girls' wrestling. In the past, it's been merged together. The IHSA has really made a push to separate those two this year. We're really proud that we had participants on our girls' wrestling team. We added intramural ping pong. Didn't know that that was going to happen, but that was very organic, and the tables were there, and they said, hey, what if we came and did this? And Craig Shaiman said, you know what? I'll sponsor that. Let's do it. And we got 18 kids that weren't participating before that jumped in and did intramural ping pong proudly, as enrollment has slowed down in its decrease, but it's still decreasing a little bit. We lost maybe 10, 15 kids from this time a year ago. But we added 76 kids in athletics alone. We had 46 kids in the fall, two in the winter, and 28 this spring to participation. So we're really proud of that. And Ashley's going to jump into some really awesome statistics here.
So your board priority is 95% engagement. And it is something that Tim and I have really leaned into. So our engagement data through the years. Last year, at the end of the year, we were at 90%. This year, right now, we're at 94.4. So really a proud, but I said 94 never hit so hard because it's not 95. Really, really liked to...
We wanted to round out.
Very into thresholds. Let's get there. So Tim and I were looking, and it was last year when we started to realize that some of the kids that we weren't quite capturing in our data because of our very traditional data tracking was not capturing kids like peer tutoring and TAs and things that, when we are talking to these students, they are high-level athletes. They don't participate in our athletics, but they are participating in our community. And that is what we're looking at. Who are these students? Are they engaged with one another? Are they making friends? Are they engaging academically? Are they successful? And then if you are a speed skater, by all means, go do that after school. We don't have ice here. So there's just certain situations where we just are knowing who our students are and then getting that number down smaller and smaller and smaller. So 94%, we are super excited to see that. And we appreciate the push that you gave us because we were starting to feel really good at 90. So, thanks. Kind of, yeah, but also tough. With that, last year, we started tracking average GPA in our engaged students. And by moving our data over to this online platform called Five Star Students, it's been a game changer for really getting granular details about student engagement and where they're at and who these students are. And one of the thing on the left, it shows the students, their average weighted GPA if they're involved in extracurriculars, and then their average weighted GPA if they're not involved. It's cool to see that through all of the sheets that we used to keep all of our engagement data on. It's accurately represented on this platform that is disaggregating this data for us now. What's really neat is it even goes further into grade level. So as freshmen, you have a higher GPA by a whole point if you were involved in something. Sophomore year, that goes up to a point and a half. So it really is the impact of being connected to your school and finding those resources, being more willing to walk into PLT, being more willing to ask for help because you see these adults and you interact with them day-to-day. One thing we've looked at with our One Lake Forest Initiative is all of our students that we are trying to actively remove barriers for engagement. That looks like the activity bus. That looks like removing engagement fee, or participation fees. It looks like really cognizantly being, working through all of our potential barriers that might stop a student from getting involved. Super excited to report that 86% of our low-income students are engaged. And that number was not something that I could track from last year, so I was trying to pull that in. Our data shows that we have 11 students that are not involved in extracurriculars. However, we partner with the Boosters this year. The high school, the Booster Athletic Team, or Athletic Parent Booster Organization. They were incredible. They started an all-scout spirit where participation, where they gave every single student in need $100 to shop in the Booster Store. We've been tracking this data to see if we remove a barrier, do students participate? And what we're finding is the answer is yes. 100% of our students have participated either in extracurriculars or one of the ways in which we have removed a barrier. They have chosen to, they have to show up. They have to turn in the, they have to turn in the gift card. They have to do something in order to redeem it. And so it really is showing that if we are actively removing these barriers, the kids are, by and large, benefiting, seeing the point, feeling good about it. That was probably one of the most, like, special days in the fall. It was right before homecoming week. And we saw more and more students wearing scout gear than ever before. And it was showing us that it wasn't that they don't want to be scouts or be a part of the community. It really is a financial piece. So by giving them $100 to shop, it really made a big difference. So we're excited to see that 53 students participated in that opportunity. And the Boosters have committed to helping us out with that again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And also a little call-out, just going to some of the meetings that I've had to attend, both PALS and some of the others with you. Ashley, thank you for that work as well. Because I think that's, having the parent groups get creative as well as you, your team, Tim, your team, just seeing that and finding a way to get those kids to connect, it's huge. So it's really important that you're finding every single one of these people. So that's great. So thank you for that work.
I appreciate it.
I'll ask one more question. Did Tim practice being able to name all the sports as they were going by? That was impressive.
Do I have to answer that on? I actually did, because I, Ashley's like, do we have to say that again? I go, I'm going to practice. I want to make sure as we're going through that I don't miss one. So I just remember Dewey, whether it was last year or two years ago, challenged Ashley and I to get to 100%. And I said, boy, that's just so lofty, but we're going to get there. And this year, when we went from 90 to 94 and a half or 94.4, we're just super proud. We're going to keep working. We're going to find more. We're going to take down those barriers. We're going to get these kids involved, and next year, we'll have a bigger number.
I will have to compliment you guys. The 94.4% is incredible. I applaud you for including kids who are tutors because I know from my own children how meaningful and experienced that was for them. I'm guessing that you're already there. If you're that close, you just haven't figured out what it is yet. But let's get to 100. Let's do it.
Well, if you round it up, it is 95. You just have to, that's a different math rule. I'm just going to use the, soon as you get over it.
It is not roundable.
Han Solo math, that's all right. All right, so we're going to move to the EdRed Liaison Reports Legislative Updates. So nothing has changed, other than a lot of activity down in Springfield. So we're monitoring that and doing some other work. So there's more to come. I would have something hopefully in May or June, some updates on stuff that's been passed and work we're doing. True North Educational Cooperative Update, John?
Nothing to add besides Superintendent Schneider's report and Matt's update earlier.
All right, thank you. Onto the action items. Action item number one, may I have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Administrative Compensation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Dr. Vincent?
Aye.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Weinberger?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, may I have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Shared Services Compensation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Vincent?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Weinberger?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion for item number three, to approve the 2025-2026 Exempt Compensation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Vincent?
Aye.
Mr. Weinberger?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four, may I have a motion to approve the Olson Transportation for Regular Transportation Services, July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2030?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Or Jen, do you want to highlight anything? I think we had on the report, it was basically a flat renewal.
A flat renewal. The only thing I would highlight is it's been a few years, actually quite a few years, since we actually went up to a formal bid. That would be the only thing I would mention. We did have four bids, four bidders for this, and it is a renewal with the existing company of Olson Transportation. It's a five-year contract with an option to renew for an additional five years. And by law, we would need to rebid at that time.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Weinberger?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Dr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. For the consent agenda items, one through 12, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Weinberger?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Vincent?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. For your requests, Michael Roast, one of one completed. Parents Carrot, three of three completed. Frank McCormick, two of two completed. Mark Merkel, one of one completed. Ad since Bonham, 10 of 10 completed. Heather Hayden, one of one completed. At this time, we have public participation for the second time. This is an opportunity for the public, if they would like to speak to the board. Are there any members from the board that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Michael Malzinski. My wife Julie serves as the A.P.T. member for Mandarin for District 67. So I was going to say, her phone's been blowing up in the last few minutes. So someone asked us to come over. I just wanted to ask, I didn't really hear what happened, but like what the effect is from the decision today on District 67.
Well, normally, we wouldn't respond in terms of questions, but I think we can share, we gave a Mandarin update in regards to the board meeting. And basically, it's going to be phased out in terms of the current plan. So we will be honoring all students coming in as a freshman next year to be able to commit to delivering A.P. all the way through those four years. So not really a change, per se, at the high school next year. But the idea is to discuss, to say if the enrollment stays very low, as it has been, what's coming in. There'll be a phase-out the following year, based on that's what's the current plans. So there'll be discussions and ideas about how best to maybe handle if there are changes at DPM in regards to scale and participation. If there is not, then we'll start to figure out and work to phase out. That's what it looks like. And then what we'd look to do is try to work with the families to give them public options, not public options, but private options to continue the education. There are some online classes. There are other types of hybrid learning opportunities. But in terms of trying to deliver and stand it up just here at the high school, that's what we're looking to basically phase that out, based on teachers and how we would set that program up. But it's effectively, there's no decision today about it. But it's, effectively, there's no decision today about it, it's more notifying that that's the out, out two years, and that would obviously have some effect backwards into Sixty-seven, but it's going to be something that's going to be looked at as Sixty-seven and the community responds of what we would, if we're going to make any changes to that, but that would be determined later in time.
And I want to be respectful to the Sixty-seven Board, but, uh, for the Sixty-seven families, there will be a communication that goes out tomorrow morning, uh, updating the community of what happened tonight, uh, to make sure that they're informed, and then conversations will specifically be, uh, addressed with our eighth graders, who would be our incoming ninth-grade scouts to see if there's any changes that they have on their horizon. Okay, so tomorrow morning, there'll be some sort of communication coming forward? Yeah, it'll be coming from Dr. Fitzsimmons, updating the community about tonight.
Well, thank you for coming. I appreciate. Yeah, please, just, all you need to do is state your name.
Okay. Uh, hi, I am Ethan.
Can you pull the mic down just a little bit?
Hi, I am Ethan Malzinski, and I am in fifth grade, and in high school, I would like to do the Mandarin products, uh, uh, program because it is fun seeing my friends, learning with them, and I like learning a nu, a unique language than Spanish or anything else, so.
Thank you for that. Well, thank you, and it's very brave of you, I appreciate you coming here and sharing that with us, absolutely, please. Thank you for sharing that, and it is something, again, as it comes to the fall, it's, we will be discussed a lot, and we'll be looking at what we can best do in serving the whole world language department. Okay, so thank you. Bye-bye, thank you for coming.
Good job, guys.
All right, uh, seeing none others, that we will, uh, the announcements, Tuesday, May sixth, will be, um, our Education Committee of a Whole, and we're going to probably be a slightly earlier time, um, or a slightly earlier time for some general meeting stuff, and then the Ed Committee might be a little bit after five. Uh, also, Tuesday, May sixth, will be the Board of Education Organizational Meeting, uh, which will be what we typically call the new-old, or old-new, um, transition meeting, where we get to honor, uh, some of our board members that are departing us, and then some new ones that are coming in. Uh, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School District One Fifteen Board Meeting for April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five?
So moved.
May I have a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.